All right, if we're all here, we may as well start the meeting on time, yes?
Please.
John and Deb and Bill, so David's not going to be with us tonight. So my name's Karen Spiewack and I'll be running the meeting this evening. So I'll call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Today is June the 9th, 2020. And of course, we are meeting remotely due to COVID-19. All votes will be by roll call vote. And just a reminder that the meetings are being recorded and that folks may be able to see you even though you may think they can't see you. Just remember that. All right, why don't we get started with a read over the agenda? We, tonight, we have community relations announcements, open forum, under appointments and resignation, but that item actually has been put on hold. We have, we'll skip down to new business. We have Stafford Street Culvert Bit Award, Four Score Holdings LLC, application for a marijuana cultivator license, application for marijuana product manufacturing license, application for a marijuana retailer license. And then we also would be just looking at the FY21 holiday schedule for town hall and non-town hall employees. Under, we don't have anything on old business, under committee reports, Board of Selectment Committee reports. We will have a presentation from the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee. Under policy review, Board of Selectmen's, we have website advertising policy we'll be discussing. Then we'll do the town administrator report. Business unknown at time of posting. And our next meeting date's very important, town election, June 13th, 2020, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Heritage School. The town meeting, June 15th, 2020, 6:00 PM, Charlton Middle School. It will be outside. And the Board of Selectmen regular meeting will be June 23rd, 2020, at 6:30 PM. And we're so fortunate tonight because we do have an executive session.
Yeah.
I know that makes all our nights, right, just to extend it a little longer? All right, and we'll go back up. All right, so before we get started, have a little surprise just to stock the meeting off on a high note. Before me, I have a certificate or two. And the first certificate is for Ms. Deborah B. Noble to thank you for your service and dedication to the town of Charlton in your position on the Board of Selectmen as well as the board's delegate on other committees. Your knowledge and experience will be missed, presented on this ninth day of June in the year 2020. And Deborah, the real thing's actually going to be in the mail.
Okay.
But wait, there's more.
Okay, that's enough.
Next, no, it's not all about you. Wait, we got John now. Certificate of recognition for, presented to, I'm sorry, John P. McGrath. Thank you for your, did I say it wrong?
No, you got it right.
Thank you for your many years' service and dedication to the town of Charlton in your position on the Board of Selectmen as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, Water Ad hoc Committee, and as the board's delegate on other committees. Your knowledge and experience will be missed, presented this ninth day of June in the year 2020. And once again, John, the real thing is, as I say, in the mail.
Thank you.
Bill, did you want to add any comments?
Only that you will both be sorely missed. That has been an absolute pleasure.
They'll be missed already.
For the past year, and really, I, whoever comes in behind you are going to have very big shoes to fill. But I'm looking forward to the fact that neither one of you are really stepping down. You're just stepping away to do other things, whether it be other office, whether it be other helping out around town, et cetera. So that's another nice way of saying we both know who we're going to appoint to miscellaneous boards when we need them, so thank you.
Deb or John, did you want to say anything?
Well, I just wanted to add what David wanted me to relate to you guys. So he sent me this to read during the meeting. "When my vacation was originally planned, there was never a thought that it would wind up conflicting with the last meeting of two of my fellow selectmen, John and Deb. I couldn't leave for vacation without leaving this note and message to you both. It's been an honor and privilege to serve with each of you on the Board of Selectmen. You served with dignity, professionalism, and compassion. I like to believe that I know both of your hearts and the good people that you are. I wish you both the absolute best in whatever you do next." David.
You are both classics.
Deb, I'll let you go first because I'm sure you've...
That's okay, go ahead, John.
I just want to say that I thoroughly enjoyed being on the Board of Selectmen. My initial thought process was to do it for one term. There were some things that I thought that were on my punch list that didn't get accomplished in the first term. And I, my family graciously allowed me to go for, you know, to be on for a second term, as well as the voters voting for me. So, you know, that was, that was very good. It's, it's been almost, I think, 25 years since I became involved in town government. And I have really, really enjoyed everything that I've, that I've, you know, that I've been involved with, with those boards. And I think that people who do not become involved in town government are missing something that's a lot of fun and it is a real civics lesson. I am so pleased to see a lot of the younger people that we have on boards and who have become involved through the student select person. Just, you know, and a lot of, a lot of specific names come to, come to mind. But it's, you know, people I've seen elected to the Parks and Recreation Commission. You know, it's just, it's, it's good to see that. And I only wish that, that younger people become involved. If you want to have an impact on, on your day-to-day life and, and also how your community is, is, is moving forward and handling a lot of the issues that we see in society today, there's no better way to do it than at the local level. And to become involved, and if you don't like something, get involved and help change it. So that's my nickel's worth of, of speech. So, but it's been a pleasure serving on, on the board with all of you. You know, we've had, we've had a lot of good discussions and professional that, you know, and, and had a lot of fun. So thank you very much. Andrew, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff, appreciate it.
Thanks, John, and Deb? You have the floor.
John, you're a tough act to follow. I should have gone first. Um, it's, it's been just a really fast three years for me. A really fast three years, it went by in a blink, really. So much has happened. But what's happened over the last three to four months speaks volumes. We've been through what we've all been through in leadership positions as town employees, residents over the last three to four months is like nothing any of us have ever been through, no matter what our age. And it makes me very proud to be part of this board because I think the true test of leadership is how you behave in a crisis. And I am so proud that I was part of this board during this crisis because I couldn't imagine a better group to go through it with than all of you. You've been amazing. And I'm going to miss everybody, but I won't be far. Okay?
All right, thank you so much, both of you. Yes, yeah, Andrew, then, did you want to say something else? No?
I'll just thank you guys. I mean, I appreciate everything that you guys have done, you know, working with you guys over the last four months and under tremendous circumstances. It's been an honor and look forward to working with you in the next phase.
All right, on that high note and happy note, we'll move on. And next on the agenda will be the announcements, the community announcements. I guess I get to do that as well. Oh, boy. All right, so first on the announcements, the town election, June 13th, 2020, is going to be at the Heritage School in Oxford again, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Just a reminder to, I think they were asking to, if you could bring your own blue or black pen for that. But if you don't, there'll be one there, don't worry. And of course, wear your face covering. The town meeting will be on June 15th, 2020, at the Charlton Middle School, Oxford Road. It starts at 6:00 PM. And just a reminder, the town meeting, for the first time ever, at least to my knowledge, is going to be outside. So you might want to bring your bug spray. And the rain date for that will be June 16th, 2020. The next announcement, the Building Construction Energy Code is changing to the 2018 edition of the International Energy Conservation Code for all projects applied for after August 7th, 2020. The current stretch code is still in play without change for new building construction. Additions and renovations default to the 2018 energy code. Next, I'm going to move down to Household Hazardous Waste and Electronics Collection. Will be Saturday, June 27th, 2020, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Casella Waste Services Facility, 165 Barefoot Road, Southbridge, Mass. Please be prepared to unload your vehicle. Masks or face coverings must be worn. And you can visit thetownofcharlton.net for more information. Finally, I will announce that there is a Board of Assessors opening. There is one opening for a member of the Board of Assessors who are responsible to value real and personal property fairly and accurately in accordance with Massachusetts general laws and the regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts Department of Revenue, which governs such activities. Also, in accordance with such laws, rules, and regulations to administer motor vehicle excise, boat excise exemption and abatement programs and to address questions, any concerns of property owners and the general public in an efficient and courteous fashion. Please send your letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen, 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass., 01507. You can certainly do that as soon as possible, would be awesome. And you can also send it via email. And that would be to Andrew, right? You@townofcharlton.net?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I believe, is Nancy Landry, the chairman of the assessors, with us? Do you see her, Andrew? I, you have the controls.
I don't. She isn't listed unless it's under a number.
Nancy, if you're on, how can she indicate in the chat box or raising a hand? Can we do that again, you're the tech person?
Then I at least can unmute.
See anything?
Okay, I don't think so.
All right, so if she does join us, because she was going to expand on what, what they were looking for, you know, how many hours we might have to put in, things like that, that I think a person might want to know. So Andrew, if you do see her come on, could you let me know? All right, thank you. All right, so next, I guess we'll go, we'll see if anyone is here for the open forum. Yep, did I miss something, Bill?
Yeah, small thing, if you paged out a little bit more, household hazardous waste.
All right, no, I read that before. I read that before. I, I wanted to see if people were paying attention, Bill.
Oh, my bad, sorry. No, clearly, clearly I wasn't, so that works out well.
It's okay, it happens. All right, so...
Actually, then, one very quick question for you because more than likely, I mean, barring a writing, you'll be the, like, ranking member, you know, come whatever. Do you want to reord prior to town meeting or do you want to wait till the 23rd?
I think we're required to wait until the meeting after, well, are you talking about, we should be waiting till the 23rd, no?
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking. I just want to make sure that you and I were on the same page or, because I don't think David, I'm assuming David doesn't care, but I don't know about the two new members coming in.
Yeah, I think, we typically do. I know nothing's typical this year with the whole pandemic, right?
Exactly.
Typically, it's the first real meeting, not before the town meeting.
No, no, that, that, that works for me. I just want to, you know, basically, in case anyone's watching, that we'll just go in the town meeting, kind of like we are now.
That's what I'd assume, yeah.
Yeah, oh, no, and again, that's fine with me. I just want to make sure that you and I are on the same page.
Yep, Ms. Noble.
Thank you.
Yes.
We had some, we actually had some questions about this. It might have been last year or the year before. And I believe you have to do that at the first regular meeting.
Yep, I believe so.
However, you will be meeting prior to the town meeting.
Exactly.
And you could do, I, pardon?
That wouldn't be a regular meeting, that would be a...
No, it wouldn't be, but it would be a meeting. So I'm not sure if it's the first regular meeting or the very first meeting. You're going to want to check that out because you will be meeting before the town meeting and you may be able to do it then.
Exactly.
And then when you go into town meeting, it'll be all set.
Right. I don't really care either way, and I mean that nicely. I just figure if people are watching, you know, we should probably figure that out at some point in the next week of, you know, whether we want to do it then or, or the following week. My assumption is we would do it the following week, but if someone else wants to do it, I'm, I'm fine with that, too.
Yeah, I'm fine with it either way. I guess the, most importantly, Andrew, if you can find out if we have to do it at a regular meeting.
Oh, I do remember now. There is something in the bylaws about when it has to be done because when we did it last time, John, you were away and you had to call in.
Correct.
We were going to postpone it to the, to the one, two weeks later and then we found out that we couldn't do that. It's somewhere in the bylaws.
Yeah, like, I have some weird...
Absolutely have to do it. And I don't recall if it's a regular meeting or if it's the first meeting after the election. So you're going to want to figure that out this week.
I think it's the first regular meeting after the election. How's that? And I believe we have it in, I think it's a policy, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I have this weird recollection that there was something strange and I just don't remember what it was. So again, it's a small knit, we can figure it out this week, but I just want to throw it out there for convo.
Yep, no, no problem.
Cool, thank you.
All right, so if there's anyone from the public who would like to say a few words? Andrew, how should they do that? Just a chat box that you would see?
There, you can unmute yourself or indicate in the chat box that you want to be unmuted?
We'll wait a couple of minutes just to, if people are technically challenged, I can relate. Anyone seeing any?
Nobody in the, nobody in the, in the group chat.
And we still don't see Nancy, right?
No, not yet.
I didn't see anything.
All right, so we'll move on if there are no objections. As I said, under appointments and resignations, we are putting what we have down, reappointments for terms expiring in June 30th, 2020, on hold until the June 23rd, 2020 meeting. Any comments about that we could?
Yeah, I'm good. I would have preferred, yeah, yeah, I, this may have actually come for me at one point because I would have preferred to wait until, until the, like, new board was here, so. But if objections, we can talk about it, but...
All right. We, we don't have any scheduled appointments? So we'll go right down to new business, which, first item under new business, Stafford Street Culvert Bit Award, Andrew?
Just to kick back to the prior discussion on organization, the bylaw is, the selectmen within seven days of each annual election shall meet elected chairperson otherwise organized to fix the time and place of the regular meeting. So, within seven days.
Okay, see how efficient he is?
Whoa, thank you, Andrew. I knew there was some special criteria.
Yeah, but if it is within seven days, it means we either have to meet that week or we have to do it.
Through the chair?
Prior to Monday.
John?
I think the stipulation, Bill, is that the election has to be accepted by town, the results of the election have to be accepted by town meeting. So that, I believe that would be your start date, you know, for, so seven days after town meeting accepts the results.
That's right, John, thank you. You know what, you're absolutely right.
Oh, good, so...
Yep, you're right, John.
I can't remember my name, Bill, but I can remember...
Honestly, John, I'm impressed with you tonight, jeez.
Top of my, going out strong.
I was going to say, big move.
Hey, we cleared something up. All right, so...
All right, so on Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020, at 2:00 PM, bids were received for the Stafford Street Culvert project. Eleven bids were received and taken under advisement. After a review of the bids by McClure Engineering, Inc. and DPW Superintendent Fossett, they are recommending the board award the Stafford Street Culvert bid to Maverick Construction Management Services in the amount of $112,175. The project will be funded out of Chapter 90 allotment.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, you, that is a very, very qualified bidder. So they, Jerry will be very happy with the work that they do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, of course, we got to do this by roll call vote. I'll go when you order, I see all of you. Ms. Slockman Noble?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes, it's unanimous. Moving on, next item on the agenda is Four Score Holdings LLC, application for a marijuana cultivator license, application for marijuana product manufacturing license, application for a marijuana retail license. Andrew, take it away.
Attaches a notice from the Cannabis Control Commission that Four Score Holdings LLC has completed an adult-use marijuana establishment application. They intend to operate as a marijuana cultivator, marijuana product manufacturing, and marijuana retail. The board is asked to review and confirm the proposed applicant's marijuana establishment is in compliance with municipal bylaws for ordinances. Town planner Randy Benson stated that the planning board has approved these requests for Four Score Holdings LLC. Once the board confirms, we will notify the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I went back and forth whether we should hold this for the new board, but this isn't really a decision. This is more of a, are they in compliance with the existing bylaws and ordinances? And knowing that the planning board signed off on it, I'm making the motion to say, yeah.
Second.
And Andrew, would you want, what they, what should the motion, how should it read? You want authorization to...
I've made a sign on behalf of the board.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Bill made the motion, John seconded. Any discussion?
Um, I just want you guys to know, this is very similar and extraordinarily similar to what we just went through with Green Gold Group. It's really no different. It's just signing off that they're in compliance with all of our regulations and bylaws, which they are, I can tell you, Four Score, up until the pandemic, had been an active participant going to the Marijuana Advisory Committee meetings and I'm sure they'll continue to do so.
Oh, thank you, Deb. And I'll also add, I know this is time sensitive, so we really couldn't hold off if we wanted to, quite honestly. So, all right, all that being said, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call vote, Deb?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye, motion passes, it's unanimous. What's next? Okay, so the next item is the FY21 holiday schedule for town hall and non-town hall employees. Andrew, you just wanted to talk a little bit about this?
I just wanted to note that attached to the list of holidays for town hall and non-town hall employees, this is for informational purposes only, to allow for planning for any meeting or event if needed. And I will just post this up here, let me see if I can find it.
Okay, and just a reminder, all this information that we're going over is a public record and easily to, you can accept, you can reach it on the town hall, the website, yes? Town website?
Yes.
Yes, all right.
Right now, I might have accidentally closed it and I don't want to share the wrong information.
Yes, please do not do that.
Which we appreciate it.
So I'll just read it real quick. Thursday, July 2nd, 2020 is Independence Day. Monday, September 7th is Labor Day. Monday, October 12th is Columbus Day. Wednesday, November 11th is Veterans Day. Wednesday, November 25th, the town hall is closed at observance of, the day at, observance for Thanksgiving and on the 26th. December 23rd is a half day for Christmas Eve. December 24th is observance of Christmas Day. December 31st is observance of New Year's Day. January 18th is Martin Luther King Day. February 15th is President's Day. April 19th is Patriots Day. And May 30th is Memorial Day. Twenty, twenty-one other years on those, so, for your information.
Zero, yeah, zero issue.
And this will be posted on the website, right, Andrew?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, all right, any discussion about that from any members?
Nope.
All right, moving on down, we don't have anything listed under old business. I'm assuming that's still a case, Andrew?
That's correct.
All right. Board of Selectment Committee reports, Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee. Do we have Steve Coleman or Noreen Smith here? Unmute, oh, I see Steve.
Yeah, good evening.
I'm here also.
Steve, Noreen, I'll let you, you want to introduce yourselves once again and then give us an update? Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. Steve Coleman, co-chair of the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Committee. And Noreen Johnson-Smith is here as well. Noreen, you're here, correct?
Yes, I am, thanks.
Good evening. So, to the board, we just wanted to give, just to provide a quick update on where the committee stands to date. We have some exciting news to announce and to show you this evening. If we could, why don't we, Andrew, we're able to play the video through Zoom?
Yeah, give me one second, I'll try to get back.
All right, so just for some context for the board, the committee worked with a gentleman named Josh Burdette from Boston Freelance Media. He was hired by the committee to produce a video on the public safety buildings and their current state and to promote the need. This video was paid for by donation from a member of the community. So we thank them very much for that generous donation in order to put together a very professional video that will ultimately, after tonight, the link will be shared. It will be embedded in the town's website on the Capital Campaign Committee page. So why don't we show the video? It's about five minutes long. And then after that, we'll get into some additional outreach comments.
All right, just let me know if there's any problems here.
In late December 2019, the Charlton Board of Selectmen appointed a steering committee comprised of Charlton resident volunteers. The committee is seeking private and corporate donation intended to lower the amount to be borrowed and the tax burden on Charlton residents to construct a new public safety building.
The current size of today's headquarters is very constricting. We've had at times six vehicles in a five-bay garage just to keep the apparatus out of the weather. Headquarters was built in the 1950s and originally was two bays. We've added on, it's now a five-bay building. Second floor was added on. Our gear is situated along the walls and with the tight cramped space, it's very difficult for individuals to get their gear on in a timely fashion. So it's just been a haphazard, fit-the-need type of thing. Station 2 is basically a used highway building that was given to us by Highway. Marine 1 is our boat and it's stuck behind an ambulance and a tanker. And in order to go for a water rescue call, we have to pull out those pieces of apparatus and then pull the boat out. Very difficult and time-consuming and any rescue seconds matter. There's no bathroom in that building, so they've provided us with an outhouse located in the rear. When the rain comes in, we've got to physically go up there and sweep the rainwater buildup out of the building. Water damage has been extensive and we've had rust in the undercarriages. Brakes have rusted out. And then Station 3, which is across the street from headquarters, we had to have built in order to house a tower apparatus. We had to lease a piece of land from a citizen in order to build a Quonset hut to be able to store that apparatus. The current building is insufficient for our ALS operation that we use today and is the standard across EMS agencies across the country. We have very limited space to house all new supplies. We have all new drugs that are on board in ALS service. So in order to maintain the security and safety of those drugs, we need to have secured locking positions within the building. Very difficult due to the space constraints that we have. The building that was built in the 1950s clearly did not have the foresight of where EMS and fire were going to go in 2000s.
Thirty years ago, when this building was built, it was built for a much different style of policing. Over the years, the building was adapted and we are finally at a breaking point where the building is not adaptable anymore. The lobby is a very busy area. On any given day, you could have someone in the lobby to renew their firearms license, a mother exchanging a child during a child exchange, and a sex offender in the lobby to register. This is all a very small area for all this activity to go on with no privacy. The state currently requires areas of the building to be updated, such as a juvenile lockup facility needs to be separated from the adult lockup. We're not able to do that right now. We're not able to do that right now. One of the safety issues is the booking area. We could only book one prisoner at a time. In doing so, if there are multiple prisoners, we have to find a way to handle the second person or third or more. Our current garage bays are not big enough to fit an ambulance into. Oftentimes, a prisoner will have to go to the hospital. The ambulance will park in front of the police station, and the prisoner will be brought out through the booking room, through dispatch, through the main lobby to get to the ambulance. There is no elevator in this building. Anytime someone needs to go from the top floor to the bottom floor, and they're not able to do the staircase, they do need to go outside of the building and around the building to come into the back door. The outside areas of the building are limited in parking. When residents come, they cannot find spots. Often, they either park on the lawn or in unauthorized places for them to park. When the cruisers are parked and not being used, and there's a snowstorm, there's no overhang or garages to secure all these cruisers. And it will often take hours to uncover the snow off these vehicles and get them ready for use for each shift. When we bring evidence into the building, it's a very non-streamlined fashion that it travels through a great distance throughout the building where it eventually gets secured. A much more streamlined process would be beneficial for court proceedings as well as the safety of officers. Across the whole country, there's been cases of fentanyl found inside of drugs. Exposure to the building from this fentanyl could be very dangerous for anyone in the whole area.
The Charlton Public Safety Building Committee, as well as the Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee, asks for your support on this project. Get involved, ask questions. Call your local police chief and fire chief to seek tours of the facilities so you can see that the struggles that they're working with on a daily basis. For more information on this project or funding the capital campaign, visit the town of Charlton's website at townofcharlton.net and click on the link to the Charlton Public Safety Building Capital Campaign Steering Committee for more information on the project and how you can donate. Thank you.
Steve, looks great. Well done.
That was excellent.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Yeah, we're very happy with the work that Mr. Burdette was able to do with us. You know, the committee went through through many revisions of that. You know, he had a lot more material that we were able to kind of trim down to get to a reasonable watching level. But we're very, very happy with how it came out. As we mentioned, you know, we encourage, you know, in the video, we talk about, we encourage everybody to, you know, contact the police chief, the fire chief, to get, you know, a physical look on the building, to actually get in there and see what's going on. You know, unfortunately, we know many people probably won't do that. So I think the video at least provides that that stopgap where they can at least get a hand, a handle on at least some of the struggles in the five minutes that we were able to portray. So as mentioned, that will become embedded on the town's website. Miss, Mr. Spiewack is working with Jeff in IT to get that done. All of these things will be launched this week. The video is also going to be used as, Noreen, as I mentioned, Noreen and I serve as co-chairs. I'm sort of handling the marketing and the PR side. Noreen is handling the donor side, working with some of the larger companies. So the other nice thing about this video is that, you know, this is something that can be emailed or directed to the website to these companies. So they have something professional to look at when when they're taking into consideration of donating us what is hopefully a large amount of money. So we felt it was important, you know, to to invest in this. And again, we're very, very very gracious and accepting of the donation of that citizen that allowed this to happen. So in addition to the video, we had some tri-fold brochures that were made. Again, professionally done glossy brochures that have all of the information sort of that was in the video as far as some of the challenges that police and fire are facing. And then, you know, why the new facilities are needed for both. It has some information on the back about the project with contact information and those kind of things. And then on the immediate, it shows how to give and how people can contribute to the website. So we had 250 of these made up. We are going to run another print because we wanted to add the hyperlink from the video. And then the committee also came up with a hashtag for social media activity, which is hashtag support Charlton PSB. Hashtag support Charlps B. So we're going to put that on all of our printed material. You did see it at the end of the video. That hashtag was there. So these will be coming as well. The committee members are handing them out. And I believe Karen Kirk, if I'm wrong, I think we made the decision that I believe we were going to do a mailer of these, or we were going to get these out somehow.
So correct, we're discussing a mail, but most importantly, sending along with the virtually or electronically when we release the video, because then people can just click on the links to get them where they need to be. So they'll be also, they'll be like the video, they'll be available to like email or on social media, et cetera. So yes, we're going to use all different avenues to get the information out.
Can you pass them out at a town meeting? We could pass them out at town meeting, you know, the committee. Just something to think about, I'm not, you know. Yeah, no, we could pass these out at at town meeting. We had, we had talked about that, and most likely, we will be, we will be doing that. And then lastly, just on the social media, John Grandalowski, finance committee member, who's a non-voting member of the committee, but he's been a tremendous asset to us with his guidance and knowledge, not only from a financial perspective, but also from from a tech and social media perspective. And his daughter was gracious enough to create a Facebook frame, a public safety building Facebook frame that has the hashtag in it. It's got the patch and the logo. And we'll post that to our social media along with the link on how anybody in the community can download that frame to use on their own personal Facebook page as well in in order to show support for the project. So that's something else that we'll be launching this week. You know, one of the things that I think our committee has been talking about, and it's no different than your board, is, you know, unfortunately, I think there's still a lot of misinformation that's out there about the project. And, you know, our part of our goal, not only in raising funds, but is also to assist the building committee itself in raising awareness and getting the right information out there. You know, the amount of misinformation that I hear on the street is somewhat overwhelming and shocking to me. So, you know, to be able to get the correct information out is important. And one of the things that the committee is going to do in conjunction with the building committee is we're probably going to hold a couple of public outreach sessions via Zoom. Unfortunately, you know, we're still not able to to get together at this point. But to give people the opportunity to come on, ask questions of not only the Capital Campaign Committee, but of the building committee, I believe either this week or next week, Andrew probably has some information on it. But very, very shortly, they should be getting the new design back with the cost estimates. So that's certainly going to be a point of information that we can talk about. You know, as you all know, everybody is working very, very hard, you know, behind the scenes to, you know, figure out a way to, you know, to fund this, you know, responsibly for the community and a number that everybody can get behind. And there's a lot of people that are working very, very hard to do that. And I think, you know, once that's figured out, hopefully that changes the hearts and minds of many voters who maybe were skeptical on the project to begin with. But, you know, the reality is, is that the need doesn't go away. Again, it's tough to capture the conditions in a five-minute video. I think we did a pretty good job of doing that. But I certainly would encourage people to try to get a physical tour of the facilities if they can. But the the need doesn't go away. And, you know, that's, that's ultimately what we're, you know, with the amount of public outreach that we're doing, we want to get people involved. People should be asking questions. And I think if they're asking questions, they're going to get the right answers, not completely relying on social media for, you know, the answers to their questions. You know, it's important to get involved, and that's why we said it in the video. So we'll be announcing some dates for some public outreach sessions via Zoom, probably within the next couple of weeks. And then lastly, I just wanted to touch on, you know, unfortunately, we, you know, and I heard you talking about it earlier, I don't think anybody anticipated that we were going to be meeting remotely via Zoom in June. And it's, it's put a, you know, it's put a bit of a of a hiccup in our plans because we had really wanted to try to do some grassroots, in-person type campaigning. And, you know, with the social distancing requirements and those kind of things, it's put a damper on that. So where we've deemed it the quiet phase, we're in the quiet phase of the campaign. But even in the quiet phase, over the last several months, we've, we've been able to raise $8,000, you know, through through some efforts, you know, again. You know, it'd be, it would be lovely if we could raise enough money to pay for the entire thing. But as we mentioned, when when we first started this out, every dollar that is donated to this campaign is going to have a direct impact on the building, which will ultimately reduce the amount of money that's needed to be borrowed. So every dollar counts. You know, we, I think we'd all love to be a little more than where we are today, but with the circumstances, you know, who could have seen this coming? But we do have $8,000 currently raised. We have a meeting next week with what we hope to be a sizable donor, where we're going to be having a conference call and a Zoom meeting on one of their board of directors meetings. And several members of the Capital Campaign Committee will be in attendance as well as Rob Barton from the Building Committee to do a short presentation on the building. So we're trying to get creative in ways to still get out to the businesses in order to seek their donations. We'd love for it to be face to face, but, you know, we have to do what we can at this point. So that's what I have. Noreen, do you have anything that you want to add?
Nicely done, Steve. Thank you. I would like to acknowledge there are a couple of other committee members on the phone that I can see. Lois Chagru and Monique Lemare. And I'd like to thank them for joining us as well. You summarize things beautifully, and the video covers a lot. As Steve said, it doesn't cover everything. There are a couple of things. I did take a tour, spent a few hours walking through the facilities. And, you know, I would like to just say that that fire station on North Main Street that houses equipment and that has the porta potty out behind it. People say that the firefighters don't work in that building, so they don't need a bathroom. But the truth is, they don't sleep in that building. They do work in that building and sometimes have to spend the entire day there. And the only thing that we, the citizens, have provided them with is a porta potty. This is their profession, and I think there are a lot of folks in town who are really grateful for both police and fire, who've helped them over the years. I know I am. We had a chimney fire once, and the fire department showed up beautifully. We had our house broken into, and the police identified the person and and made an arrest. We've been really pleased with the public service we've received from both of those organizations. And so I did want to also mention that when people make a gift of a private contribution, you can make it in honor of, if you have a favorite firefighter, or there's one in your family, or you have a favorite police officer, or someone you want to say thank you to, this is a really nice way to say thank you to the people that are working in those departments every day. And then finally, you know, I think there's an urgency to this project that without taking a tour, residents may not appreciate. Firefighting, for example, has changed dramatically. It's not just the hose and water. These firefighters are exposed to chemicals. They have very complicated gear that they wear to go fight a fire that tries to keep those chemicals off of them. And when they come back from a fire and they've been exposed to things, or they've been putting out a fuel truck spillover on the mast pike or some other hazardous material, they have to wait in line to use one shower stall. And the ambulance driver gets to go first, so that if the ambulance gets called, they can turn around and go out faster. And then the firefighter's gear has to get dragged through the lobby, where the citizens go into the back to stand in line to use the machine to wash it. You know, these are things that delay our response when we need them. And I do think there is an urgency to help fix some of these problems that have developed over time and that put our firefighters and police officers at risk. So thank you.
That's all I have. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Anyone else from the committee who's on the call? Would you like to say anything? You can unmute. No, the only other thing, at first, thank you both for being here tonight and everyone else. I want to just stress how I feel that it's such a pleasure to work with all of you. I really feel like we have the A-team, and we're making a lot of progress, given, you know, what's going on in the world. So thank you again for your efforts and staying the course. I did want to also thank John Grandowski's daughter Gabriella. She also did the, I don't know if you noticed, let's see who's paying attention. In the video, we have the police patch and the fire patch, and then there's a different patch that merges the two. And that was thanks to Gabriella Grandowski. So awesome, awesome job. Yes, again, getting the youth involved, and we have such talents. So thank you. We appreciate that. And I also want to stress that, you know, the committee welcomes the questions. We want to hear all your questions. Please ask, ask away. Now's the time. And go to the website. There is, Steve, the FAQs, are they, they're on the public safety building? Please refresh.
So we do have frequently asked questions on the Capitol Campaign website as well. So they can find them, but there's a very detailed FAQ section there.
Yep. So a lot of information, you know, again, educate yourself, ask the questions. And, yeah, hopefully, you'll zoom into one of our informational meetings. So any other comments from committee members? I mean, board, sorry. John, Bill, Deb? Yes, John.
First of all, thank you to the committee. Steve, you bring definitely a level of, you know, professionalism to this with what the what the departments actually need. And Noreen, thank you very much for being the co-chair also, you know, especially on the outreach portion of it. I just want to bring up one of the things that Steve said that really frosts me a lot of times. And it's not just about this, but it's about a lot of things that happen in town when we have big-ticket items to come up for for consideration. And one of the things that Steve and the committee are cautioning against are the misinformation that's out there. Please take a look at who is putting the information out there. The people that have the most to gain from shooting this down are the large landowners. Most of them own very large tracts of land that they have either not developed yet or they're in the process of developing. And their their tax burden is going to go up on this incrementally for their holdings. Please look at who ran the last campaign against the against the building and funding it. And please look at who is putting out the information for us again. And and view this with filtered glasses as to the reasoning as to why they want to do this. It has happened with many, many large projects in town through the years that I've been involved in. They're well-funded, and they have a financial interest in shooting this down. Please, like I said, if you have questions on this, ask a committee member. Ask the Board of Selectmen. Ask the town administrator. But please make sure that you you get the right information so they can make a good choice. And with that, that's probably my last rant.
Well, let's hope not. Come on, John.
Thank you, John. Any other comments?
No, through a chair, I mean, I just recommend too, much like yourself, Noreen and Steve said, that if you have any questions, take a tour. I mean, truly, it takes 15 minutes, 20 minutes max. You'll actually be, like, you should be enlightened at the amount of disrepair in both buildings. I mean, it's really not an exaggeration once you actually see it. So if you do have the opportunity, the staff over there, they'll always find time for you. So, you know, just give someone a call, and I guarantee that they can arrange some time for you to walk through.
Thank you. And the last thing I'll say about it is, I truly believe, and again, been know all the facts now, most of them, that we really can't afford not to move forward with this project. And I mean that from a financial point of view. And I mean that, most importantly, from a safety point of view, the safety of our first responders. And remember, who they, their job is to get first responders. And remember, who they, their job is to get to us, to help us, to save our lives. So just, just, I really hope, as all the facts, um, everyone finds out more and more about the projects, they'll understand that. And it's, and they'll, they'll look at the numbers and they'll look at the safety factor. And just, all I've ever asked anyone, ever, is you have the right to vote, no matter whichever way you want, to support something or not support something. But be informed, you know, be informed, learn about it, and then make your decision. Um, I'll never, I, I personally would never knock anyone for, for that. But just, just find out some of the facts and ask a lot of questions. And that, that's all I'll say today.
Can I, can I ask something?
Sure. Deb?
Thanks, Karen. Um, first, I, I just want to say to, to Noreen and Steve and all the members of the committee, what an amazing job you've done. It's in spite of, um, all the hurdles you've had to go through, you've not only raised money, but you've created this incredible video. So professional, so good. So, I, and I think it'll be very eye-opening for a lot of those people that my fellow selectmen have mentioned, who have not actually gone on tours of these facilities and don't know the situation that our workers are in. But when John was talking about some of the misinformation, let's say, I wonder, is it possible to do, um, part two video that talks a little bit about the funding? Because there's, I, I agree with John, there's been a lot of misinformation out there about that. And folks think that their taxes are going to go up exponentially every single year that they are here, and it's just going to be more and more of a burden on them. And we know that's not true. So for those people that are concerned about the financial aspect of it, could there just be, you know, something a little more brief to explain it to them? I know that we've had these discussions at town meetings before and we've talked about it, but sometimes the visuals are needed, you know? Just my two cents. Cause I think everything you've done thus far is incredible.
So I could, I can make a comment and then we'll open it up to, well, actually, does any of the committee members want to comment on that first, before Chair goes last?
I'll, I'll let you go, Mrs. Spewack. You can go ahead.
And, Noreen, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'll just say thank you, uh, for that. And, um, I think it's a great suggestion. I think there, you know, um, people are busy. They're, they have their daily lives and, um, they don't spend necessarily a lot of time recalling and, uh, reviewing some of the decisions made, how they were made, when, you know, when they were made, um, and what the implications are necessarily. And then subsequent decisions that, um, follow that. So I think, I think, you know, I have trouble sometimes saying, well, what, when, when exactly did we do that? What was that vote? You know, how did that happen? So I, I agree that getting some clear information out to help, uh, remind the voters of what has happened and who, um, and how, and, you know, how this has progressed, uh, to become the, the project and the building that it is, is really important. And the financing is everything to making it possible. So I think adding the financial piece, um, is a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you. And so I, I do know, so right now, behind, there's a lot of moving parts behind the scene. People, people are still trying to look at, you know, they, the numbers and what will work, what can be paid with, you know, within the levy limit, what new growth is going to be coming in, is that, do we have any assets that we can sell? So there is a lot of people working really hard because they, they heard, again, the motion passed at the Maytown meeting 2019 to move forward with the concept of the public safety building for 28.5 million. That was in there that passed. And then moving forward, when we went to ballot, ballot, the, the funding mechanism failed. People did not want to, to fund, you know, 28.5 million dollars just with, just via debt exclusion. I got that right, right, everyone? Right? I didn't misspeak? So, so again, people are listening and getting, working behind the scenes to move forward with something reasonable, um, and palatable and to make this work. Because, and I will use the word need, and I rarely do that. This is not a want, folks. And my, I know, I'm entitled to my opinion too. When you really dig down deep and you look into the facts, this is a need. And I, I, I would hope everyone just try to jump on board. Let's, let us know what your ideas are. But Finance Committee is working, um, Select Board, you know, we're going to be working more on this. I mean, you have me working as the liaison, as the liaison, but there are other people trying to identify funds. And I do, having that, said that, so Deb, I don't know that we'll actually do a video, but I like that idea. But we're very, we'd like to be very frugal. So we'll get that information out there when we know better, you know? And I guess people don't have a long attention, attention span. So putting it out in bits and pieces, uh, we just ask, when we put it out there, let's make sure you, you take the time to read it. But the numbers, everything will be out there. Everything's been open, open to the public. Um, and we're certainly open to ideas. But some of these questions that we're talking about right now, they're already answered on the FAQs. I did want to, I did want to mention that. So, uh, but great. Thank you for, for that. Any, anyone else?
Yeah, Madam, through, through the chair?
Yep, Steve.
So Deb, thank, thanks for those comments on, on the video. That's, that's appreciated. Um, it just kind of dawned on me, you know, the video that, that we produced, um, through Boston Freelance Media, that was an expensive video. So to do something, you know, similar, it's probably going to be cost prohibitive. But I just had a thought that, you know, working with cable television, um, we probably could put something creative together, um, you know, to that, to that point in terms of at least explaining the financing. Um, alls you have to do, you know, like, like Grundalowsky's, um, you just got to get some teenagers involved to figure out the computers and the graphics. So we could really make anything happen. But, you know, I think that there is, there's certainly some creative things that I think we could do maybe through vocal cable television that, um, will, will be free, uh, but still be able to get the point across in terms of, of visual and, and term, an audio and a visual in terms of the budget. So we'll, we'll certainly look into that. Thank you.
Yeah, Steve, we can have a nice poster made and you can be Ross Perot up there.
That's a great idea, Steve. I love that word.
Yeah, no, yeah. I'm sure you all think that's a great idea.
Yep. We do, we do. All right. Um, any other conversation before we move on to the next agenda item? No? I, I have to say one more thing. Thank you again. I know I thanked them before, but, you know, the people behind the scenes like our finance director, Donna and Joanne and Andrew and I, I hate, this is why I hate naming people, because I leave people out. But you know who you are. And it took a lot of work to get where we are today. And it's the committee and it's the people behind the scenes. So, um, thank you. Can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. We'll move on. Now, I forgot, let's see, we are, uh, that's it for committee reports, correct, Andrew?
That's correct, yeah.
All right. So Board of Selectmen Policy Review, Website Advertising Policy, Andrew?
In reviewing and updating the Board of Selectmen Policy Book, we're asking that the board rescind the website advertising policy as, as it is no longer usable on our current website.
Motion rescind. Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. Bill?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I, yes.
You're first on the screen now. I see why.
No, no, I'm sorry. I was gonna think, I'm like, what did I just motion? Yeah, no, I.
Say yay. Yeah. Uh, Deb?
Aye.
All right. John?
Aye.
All right. And the Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Uh, Town Administrator Report. Andrew, you're up again.
Yeah, I really don't have, uh, anything new to add this week, um, other than just a reminder to everybody about the town election and town meeting for this upcoming week. Um, yeah, the big changes for town meeting will be that it'll be at six o'clock instead of seven o'clock. It'll be outdoors instead of indoors. And this will be the first year that we'll be, uh, using the, uh, remote clickers. So, once you check in and get your remote clicker, as long as you can hear the proceedings, uh, you can basically stand anywhere within range. Uh, there is a range finder on the clicker that the little, it's like a little, uh, um, signal bar, like on your, uh, cell phone. So as long as you have signal, you should be able to still, uh, cast your vote. Uh, so that's, uh, that should be, that'll be explained when you get the, uh, the clickers at town meeting. But that'll allow people to kind of socially distance and, and sit somewhere that they feel most comfortable, uh, during, during the meeting, as long as they can hear. And, uh, we're, we're working to see whether or not we can get, uh, AM radio coverage so that people can just sit in their cars during, during it. But.
Very good.
As a, as a reminder, make sure that we get those clickers back at the end of the night. So, uh, other than that, I don't know how much, uh, much else to report.
All right. Thank you so much. Next would be other business unknown at time of posting. Any?
Nothing right this time.
All right. So moving on, next meeting announcement, once again, the town election, June 13th, 2020, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Heritage School. Town meeting, June 15th, 2020, 6:00 PM, Charlton Middle School. As Andrew just said, it's going to be outside. And then we, our Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting will be June 23rd, 2020, and that will start at 6:30 PM. Um, and that's all we have for today. And we do have to, executive session. We will be going into executive session. Do we have any other business, however, before we motion to do so?
Through the chair.
Yep, John?
Um, just, uh, I did leave out one group when I was thanking people. And that would be the town employees and the department heads. Without them, uh, any of the boards or committees that I have been on would have been, uh, vastly, uh, less successful than they were. And I just, uh, I just want to thank them. It's been a pleasure, um, working with them. And, uh, they have made my, they have made my life easy on any of the boards that I've been involved in. Um, and with that, I am, uh, I am leaving you because I do have to go to work. And, uh, it's been a pleasure.
Thanks, John.
Which is all I have, John.
We'll talk to you soon.
Yeah.
All right. So Madam Chair, um, Deb, unless you want to bring us home as your, uh, as your final motion as a, or at least potential final motion as, as a select person.
Bill, you do it so well. Why don't you go ahead?
Oh, you're killing me. All right. So Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to enter an executive session under MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and to, pardon me, and to reconvene to open session for any other business and to adjourn.
Second?
No, you have to declare.
I do declare.
Second.
The Chair so declares. All right. We have a motion and a second. Bill?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
John? Is he gone? He left. Good. Okay. Chair votes aye. Okay, we're now in executive session. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.